But I also want to thank Communications that has set up this entire production so that people can watch online along with being here presently, and then we'll have to break down and move to all the City Hall for the 3 o'clock meeting. So I know that y'all have a busy day, and I certainly do appreciate it. All right, we're scheduled for a couple hours here. Let's go ahead and get started without any further ado, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a single item workshop. This is your fourth budget workshop in your preparation for the fiscal year '24 budget that'll begin October 1st. In the previous workshops, we've had a good discussion. You've given us clear priorities to assume and build the budget. We are recommending increase, significantly increase, in our TPD budget. Otherwise, we're recommending that we maintain the level of service, in particular in our general fund service areas, which are largely made up of police, parks and recreation, our public works activities, those anchor our general services. As you mentioned, our budget team has done a good job of putting together a complex budget, a great job. The budget is made up of 14 funds, so that's not always so easy. It's not a single fund. We've got to balance the interest of everything that happens in our delivery of municipal service. So I believe you have a good budget in front of you. It is a proposed balanced budget. It recommends an increase in the millage rate of four tenths of a mil. That is less than we started. Robert and team have been able to analyze the budget closely, find areas where we could reduce the expenses, and we've dropped that original projection about 35%. So that's a good thing. We believe that the recommendation is appropriate based on your priorities. This particular meeting was organized as a lunch and learn, so prior to the meeting, budget staff and other department staff have been here to interact with the public, answer questions. We know that's important. I think that was worthwhile, and we've got a full presentation for you today, and of course, to take public comments. So our pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor. If it's okay with you, I'll turn it over to Robert for the presentation.
So let's have the full presentation, and then we'll hear from the public, then we'll open it up for questions and discussions from the Commission. Robert, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Is the volume good? It sounds a little bit different from the Commission chambers. Everybody can hear. All right.
Yeah, put it a little closer, I think.
Yeah. All right, how does that sound?
It better.
I can hear a little bit more at that point. So again, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, appointed officials, members of the public. As the City Manager mentioned, fourth budget workshop. We're glad to be out in the community where public services are delivered. Police, parks and recreation, public infrastructure, community beautification, those reside in the general fund, and that's where we'll focus a lot of our attention today because of the recommendations we're making for the Police Department. The fiscal year '24 budget is in line with your mission to be the national leader in the delivery of public service. We strive for best practices in financial and performance management. We are leading among our peer cities in municipal cost comparison, and that even accounts for the large land area that we cover and 45% of our property off of the tax roll. Got to remember to do two things at once. As part of that, as part of our direction is our strategic plan, which guides us in the major areas. One of those is addressing poverty, and the budget is a plan to ensure that that strategic plan priorities are completed. Thus far, 89% of our targets are completed or on track. The fiscal year '24 and '23 budget and fiscal year '24 budget will continue to reach out for disconnected youth, address affordable housing, investing $3.1 million in initiatives to impact the health and wellness of our citizens, as well as connecting our community through public infrastructure network. The graphic shows those targets that have been set and those that have been on track on the right-hand side of this graphic. Another priority in the budget plan is economic development. The International Passenger Facility Processing Facility comes to mind, the Foreign Trade Zone, the capacity to attract new tenants to the airport, leasing 27 acres of that airport land, and then expecting to bring in hundreds of new jobs. As important is that customers in Tallahassee paid $91 million less for electricity than customers in private utilities. And so that's a distinct area of our municipal cost comparison that we'll look at in a few minutes. Another priority in the budget plan is quality of life. 90 parks, 70 miles of trails, the fact that 87% of our residents are living within a 10-minute walk of a park or green space, and then again, a broad list of athletic fields, tennis courts, pickleball courts, playgrounds, pools, dog parks. Can't forget our dogs. It's the best way to, there we go. Did you put your hand up and block that? As part of our strategic plan and infrastructure, we maintain efficient public transit, 650 lane miles of roads, 60 miles of roads are resurfaced annually. That maintains our roads at a good level, and we want to make sure that occurs. Were we to step back from any of that, then it becomes more costly to construct new roads or to repair roads that get out of that good status. We've dedicated ourselves to 10 sidewalk projects annually, 10 new sidewalk projects annually, and as I mentioned, the efficient public transit moves 1.6 million people in the last year. Public safety, again, is one of our priorities. It's a vital priority to be a safe, resilient, and inclusive community. We've got a zero recidivism rate for the tempo participants. We've got 2,300 nonviolent mental health-related calls for the team unit, again, with an outcome of no arrests. The Capital Area Real-Time Crime Center for Community-Led Safety has stood up, and this budget continues some of the efforts with artificial intelligence, real-time ability to fight crime, and is part of the recommendation that we're making today. And additionally, we've got $19.2 million dedicated, beginning in '23 through '24 and '25, for the Neighborhood First plans. These strategic plan goals and objectives and accomplishments will continue with fiscal year '24. The budget assumptions that we've discussed in the previous three meetings are to maintain existing service levels for Parks and Rec, public infrastructure, housing, community resilience, and community human service partnership. We want to increase the TPD's budget by 14% or $9.5 million to address violent crime. We work towards remaining an employer of choice by investing in employees, recommending a 5% raise and a $2,000 minimum for those lowest-paid employees. This budget in fiscal year '24, as part of the assumptions, is also investing $7.8 million in previously-approved public safety initiatives, as mentioned, Tempo Team, the Real-Time Crime Center. This budget also funds capital improvement projects and makes efforts to replenish the reserve funds. As part of the maintaining existing service levels and spending, it demonstrates that we're cost-effective. We provide value in the city's programs. When we look at other communities, we see that Parks and Recreation spends less than half as much per acre as some of our partner communities. Star Metro's operating expense per revenue hour is $95 compared to averages that we see of $107 when we compare ourselves in municipal cost comparison. And then also, in an important area, the maintaining existing levels of service and spending in housing and community resilience. The programs that we develop in HCR incentivize approximately 3,000 affordable housing units in the local pipeline. It's higher per capita than all of the cities in the MCC. It's through partnerships, it's through zoning laws that you've developed, and then it's through efforts to identify opportunities as they are brought forth. I'm not sure if I'm changing it or if when I'm doing this, it's being changed, but thank you. What we have discussed in recommending, recommended is an investment in TPD to address violent crime. We want to make sure that we attract and retain and ensure staff is able to operate within the umbrella of community policing with the programs that you've championed, such as Tempo and Team, and that is the 20 officers that we're recommending is as a result of where we see ourselves as we compare ourselves to peer cities in Florida, and also when we compare ourselves across where other entities are, the numbers that they maintain in other, across the federal spectrum. At the same time as investing in public safety, we want to remain an employer of choice. The city remains committed to investing in its employees and attracting and retaining the best talent, and we know that we are operating in an increasingly competitive labor market. I mentioned the fiscal year '24 budget maintains a 5% across-the-board pay increase and a minimum increase of $2,000. We also maintain the average share of health plan costs for employees at 20%, ensuring more take-home pay for those with family health plans. And then we've also scheduled pay increases for police and fire, including raising the starting police officer salary to $60,000. As part of the, what we hear is a three-legged stool of investing in public safety to address violent crime, we also then maintain service levels that recognize employees and their wage needs, and then continue long-term goals that you've directed us towards with the $7.8 million for previously-implemented initiatives: Tempo, Tifla, Team, Neighborhood Safety Programs, gun violence mitigation, partnering with local law enforcement, and then the Council on the Status of Women and Status of Men and Boys, as well as Status of Women and Girls. Maintaining those existing service levels requires that we have a balanced general fund, and that one aspect of the general fund are the expenses. The general fund expenses are $201 million. As I mentioned, that includes the $7.8 million for Tempo Team and Neighborhood First. It includes an additional $9.5 million in TPD, and those TPD funds account for the largest share of the general fund expenditures. I'll note that, as we discussed at our last meeting, there was a gap in our funding. We were able to refine the budget based on property appraiser final numbers that came to us in June 1st. We refined capitalized wages for the departments once we had results for fiscal year '23, and then we worked closely with the Treasury Clerk's Office to address a special insurance reserve to balance the revenues for the fund. I need to go back one. Thank you. The proposed budget is balanced with revenues from the Leon County Property Appraiser. As mentioned by the City Manager, the proposed balanced budget includes an increase in the city property tax of .4 mils. It's a 35% decrease from the original projected increase of .62 mils, and that provides necessary funding for 20 new police officers, competitive police wages, and advanced technology to address trends in violent crimes. And that change in revenue balance with adjustments in expenses brings us to the $201 million balanced budget. I mentioned earlier that at 4.5 mils, the increase for a typical household would be $7.50. That looks at an average household of $274,000 with a $50,000 homestead exemption. We would estimate that a house that's among our most affordable would be about $3.50 per month, or just about $45 per year. As you look at these graphics, we show the municipal cost comparison with the assumption about the 4.5 mils. You'll notice that we remain the lowest and most cost-effective provider of services in the community. We look at this so often, and I think it's important to note that this essentially gives us one way to compare ourselves to other communities who provide similar services, to know how cost-effective we are, how efficient we're being, and even with the change in the millage rate, we remain the lowest. The graphic to the right that shows the trends since fiscal year '17 shows the general fund ad valorem millage rate, maintaining a steady 4.1 mils. If it ticks up in fiscal year '24 to 4.5 mils, you'll see that we are still well below where our other comparative cities are. I think it's important that municipal cost comparison acts almost as if we're looking at the Consumer Price Index. There's a basket of goods that we know that we provide as public service. We know that other communities provide those same services in a variety of means and ways, whether it be through private entities for electric or water and sewer, or through our public municipal utilities that we have in Tallahassee. Fire services fees can be paid for through a fee and/or through the general government, but this basket of goods, so to speak, in this municipal cost comparison allows us to look at ourselves relative to other communities and say, not only are we providing effective services and qualitative services, but also cost-effective As part of this budget, we'll also complete studies to fully recover costs for programs and services that benefit users. It was mentioned that we have 14 operating funds, one of which is the general fund, which relies on property taxes and state revenue sharing. We've refined those numbers to an exact amount. We will then review other fee studies on a rotating basis to ensure that there's fairness and equity in the rates that are charged. The following fee and rate studies are underway, the solid waste fee study. We're working with Leon County to update the county's cost of solid waste, transfer, and disposal, and expect to have final numbers in the next, over the summer. The electric rate study is currently underway, as well as the fire services fee, which we've attached the draft resolution to adopt those and be consistent with where we have increased residential fees by 1.5% over time. This fiscal year '24 budget also addresses the capital improvement projects. The fiscal year '24 through '28 capital improvement plan was provided as part of this budget. It includes strategic projects like Senior Center, the South Side Transit Center, Fire Station 17. It reflects a wide variety of funding sources, a few which are general-funded and cash-funded. It totals, over five years, $1.07 billion. When we adopt this budget in fiscal year '24, we'll adopt that first year fiscal year '24 as about a $24 million investment in our power plants, in our underground water and sewer systems, and in our facilities across the government. As part of this budget update, we're aware of where we are in the third quarter. This should be a familiar graphic. We've reported each of the quarters that we are expected to be on budget and balanced by the end of the fiscal year. We use this indicator, this graphic, to show where we are with our 14 operating funds. When we identify them as green, we do not expect any action to be taken, and that is where we've been during this fiscal year. We are asking, as part of this third-quarter update, to make some minor adjustments and amendments to the fiscal year '23 budget. The Utility Master Project is on pace and moving faster than expected, and so funds that were established next year, we're asking to bring those funds forward so that we can bring to completion that technology, that Utility Master Project. That funds customer billing, customer contact, and any support efforts with our utilities. The underground utilities and public infrastructure have two projects, roadway projects that are, there's an opportunity to accelerate those, and so we're requesting a $240,000 increase to fleet sidewalk improvements on Dellwood and Pinewood Drive, and then we're also asking for $585,000 from Sewer Accounts Receivable Fund to do inspection and soil testing that's provided by the city and will be reimbursed by the county, and that Accounts Receivable Fund is established so that we can do the work and then be reimbursed. With that overview, our next steps are to take into consideration the local requirements for advertising, our property taxes to the community. We have this current budget workshop and reporting the third-quarter update, the fiscal year '24 proposed budget, and approval of a tentative millage rate. On July 1st, we'll get the certified property valuation, which will show us what Value Adjustment Board changes have been made the past few years when we've seen those. Those have reduced the property taxes slightly, but we're, so we're confident that when we ask you to take a vote to advertise a 4.5000 millage rate, that will be in step for the September 13th and September 27th meetings, where we will have budget hearings and formally adopt the fiscal year '24 budget. With that proposed fiscal year '24 balanced budget for your consideration, we're asking for these four steps to be followed: approving a tentative millage rate of 4.5 mils for advertisement, providing any feedback on the proposed budget, and then also affirming the schedule that we've established, September 13th and September 27th, to be advertised on that trim notice, and then lastly, accept the third-quarter update, as well as the amendments that we're recommending. I stand ready for any questions.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, let's go to public comment, and since we don't have our snifty light system, I'm going to ask you to keep us on task.
All right. I'll do just that, Mayor. Thank you. We do have about 10 individuals who've filled out a form and asked to speak, and we'll give each speaker three minutes for comments. As the Mayor said, I'll try to let you know when you're at 2 and 1/2 minutes though that you can begin wrapping up your comments. We have about 12 speakers, and if you'll speak from the microphone right here in the center of the room, that'd be great. Our first speaker is James Houston.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is James Houston. I'm the pastor of Bethelone AM Church located 8437 North Meridian Road here in Tallahassee, Florida. The city's 2020, 2024 consolidated plan, which the annual, which the annual plan you will be considering this afternoon is designed to implement, states that extremely low-income rental households comprise the population that experiences the greatest level of housing problems. As Capital Area Justice Ministers have demonstrated many times, the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies reports that over 13,500 families earning very low and extremely low income are severely housing-cost burdened, paying more than 50% of their income for rent and utilities. These are families on the verge of becoming homeless, are struggling to get back on their feet after being homeless. Other Schimberg data demonstrate that this burden falls disproportionately on people of color in our community. 21% of white families in Tallahassee are severely housing-cost burdened, while 37% of Hispanic families and 32% of Black families face these oppressive circumstances that harm their children and comprise one of the root causes of crime in our community. Senate Commissioners have frequently told us that affordable housing is the number, that affordable housing is the number-two priority, but when push comes to shove, when money has to be spent, they tell us that public safety is the number-one, implying that there's not enough money, or is that not enough political will. We all know that where there's a will, there is a way, and there is a way forward to address this very low, extremely low-income rental housing crisis. Now is the time for this commission to step up and take a new way forward to establish and finance a new city program to incentivize affordable rental housing developers, to set aside greater numbers of units that families with very low and extremely low incomes can afford. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Is Bill Phelan. Bill Phelan will be followed by Centoria Houston.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name's Bill Phelan. I live at 3941 Long and Winding Road. I'm a member of the Capital Area Justice Ministry Affordable Housing Committee and a member of the United Church in Tallahassee. As Reverend Houston said, there are 13,500 families in our city who earn very low or extremely low incomes, yet they are paying more than half their income for rental housing. These are not nameless misfortunates who have failed to take advantage of our city's opportunities. They are the working poor who are essential to our economy and to the functioning of our private and public institutions. They are people with whom we interact every day in our congregations, local businesses, our schools and universities, and our city, county, and state agencies and offices. They include maids and housekeeping workers, servers and cooks, retail workers and cashiers, nursing assistants, receptionists, administrative assistants, and law clerks, underground utilities technicians, and solid waste collection drivers, school crossing guards, reserve police officers, and fire dispatchers. Annualized pay data that CHAM obtained indicate that several hundred of these very low and extremely low-income family wage earners are likely to be City of Tallahassee employees, people whose salaries you pay. It is said that love needs to be a two-way street, yet for far too long, the City of Tallahassee has been a one-way street, where those earning the least in our community are expected to squeeze every dollar to live in unaffordable housing so that they can keep our city functioning. Now is the time for this commission to step up and turn this one-way street into a two-way street by allocating $5 million in the 2024 budget to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support a new initiative to address the rental housing needs of those who need it most. And now is the time to commit to continuing on this way forward, to allocate $5 million each year to support that program. Let's work together with other stakeholders to put that plan together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Centoria Houston, and then Tara Boyder.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Centoria Houston. I, my name is Centoria Houston. I reside at 3113 May Road in Tallahassee. I'm a member of the Capital Area Justice Ministry Affordable Housing Committee. Our city needs to wake up to the primary cause of homelessness, the severe shortage of safe, affordable, and accessible rental housing, and we need to act on that awareness to forge a new way forward. Similar to housing cost burden, homelessness also disproportionately oppresses people of color. While blessed, comprise 15% of the Florida population, While blacks comprise 15% of the Florida population, they comprise 38% of the state's homeless population. City commissioners have frequently said ending homelessness as a goal of our community. While the city has provided considerable resources to the organizations that provide assistance to unhoused families and individuals, we have failed to act intentionally on the primary cause of homelessness in this country, the lack of rental housing that can be afforded by families with extremely low and very low incomes. A national study of multiple cities concluded that the lack of affordable housing is a single factor that consistently explains homelessness levels, not drug use, not mental illness, and not poverty rates. The 2022 federal strategic plan to prevent and end homelessness states emphatically that housing is the solution to homelessness. The strategies and the action plan you will vote on this afternoon focus on services for homeless people and families, coordinated care, rapid rehousing, and eviction prevention measures. These services and short-term rental assistance are band-aids that don't affect the primary problem, namely that rental housing developers do not produce enough housing that extremely low and very low income families can afford because the developers lack the financial incentives to do so. We strive to limit homelessness to a minimum, but it will continue to be a one-way street so long as the dead end of insufficient affordable rental housing is left by the wayside. Now is the time for the commission to step up, turn this around, and embark on a new way forward for our most vulnerable family.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Tara Boyder, and then Robert Gibbs.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. I'm Tara Boyder. I reside at 3528 Clifton Drive here in Tallahassee. I'm a member of this same Cajun group, and I attend Fellowship Presbyterian Church. We submit that this commission has chosen, what, a one-way street for public safety, choosing to prioritize police funding above funding affordable housing for our most vulnerable citizens. As important as our police are to us, and they are, policing alone does not equate public safety. There is a new way forward, a way to complement increasing police funding. There's a growing body of research that demonstrates that providing affordable housing can reduce crime, can in fact get out ahead of crime. A study that examined the use of low-income housing tax credits found that in low-income neighborhoods, the introduction of affordable housing decreases crime and decreases segregation. In other words, when a city focuses on increasing affordable housing for our very low-income, extremely low-income families, it can reduce the public crime that we're also concerned A report actually showed significant positive outcomes, including these things: reduced emergency room visits, reduced need for mental health services, a reduction in the number of jail days spent by individuals, and a reduction in the probability of committing crimes. The city that chooses to dedicate funds to affordable housing offers its citizens a chance to live both healthier and safer lives. That is public safety. It is time for this commission to embrace a new way forward. It is time to lead Tallahassee beyond a narrow focus on policing to a broader effort that will truly increase public safety. You can do this. You can do this by working ever more diligently to ensure that affordable housing is available for our families that need it, for those members of our community whose honest wages do not provide sufficient funds for the housing units now available. Thank you for working on this with us.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Robert Gibbs. Robert Gibbs followed by Dot Enman Johnson.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Reverend Robert Gibbs. I reside at 6340 Duck Call Court in Tallahassee, and I'm a member of the Capitol area Justice Affordable Housing Committee and a member at Trinity United Methodist in Tallahassee. As Cajun has stated many times, we've heard it again today, the experts and affordable housing providers consistently tell us that additional subsidies are required to correct the market failure of insufficient rental housing for families with very low and extremely low incomes. That's why we're asking you to initiate a new program to incentivize affordable rental housing developers, to set aside greater numbers of apartments for families at these levels of income. Relying on existing city policies and programs leaves our most vulnerable families on a roundabout, waiting for a chance to get through this traffic jam to save affordable, accessible rental housing. We all recognize that constructing that off-ramp through the traffic jam will require new capital. Existing federal and state tax credits and loans have not been sufficient. Some of you suggested to us some time back that such a program could only be undertaken through increasing a millage rate, but you told us that the increasing of millage rate would be a landmine politically where you're not willing to tread. So on March, March 27th, our Nehemiah Action, where four of our five city commissioners attended, you saw 749 of your constituents stand to demonstrate their willingness to pay more in property taxes to support this new way forward. Now we know the millage rate you've agreed or agreeing to apply to the police study, which is a great idea. And yet now with priority number two, if that's public safety priority, where number one, affordable, is how does it get to number two? We know, as Reverend Houston said, where there's a will, there's a way. That's why we're asking you to step up, exercise the will and power now to allocate $5 million to the 2024 budget to support a new initiative to address rental housing needs of those who need it the most, and to commit now to continuing on this way forward to allocate $5 million a year to support that program. Let's work together with other stakeholders in our community and put a plan together. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Dot Enman Johnson is next, and then Stanley Sims.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record.
Dorothy Enman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive. And good morning. I am speaking very clearly against the tax increase, the millage rate increase. The reason for this increase was affordable. It was affordable based on adding three new assistant managers at $200,000 salaries each, when without looking ahead to see what our finances would be for this city. It was affordable because if you had just listened to two other of your appointed officials when they said they had concerns about the police contract before you voted on it, you could have avoided being in this problem. I'm not against funding public safety and employees who provide that for this city. I am concerned that we stay within our budget and don't place an untenable amount of the burden on the poorest in our community. Tallahassee has a 26.1% poverty rate. One out of every four people in this city live in poverty. If you don't deal with affordable rental housing and the problems created by poverty, you are not shutting down the pipeline to homelessness. You're talking about investing money in homeless, in the homeless problem. Well, if you shut down the pipeline by properly funding affordable rental housing, which Schimberg indicates is Tallahassee's biggest problem.
You're two and a half minutes.
You have so many people who are living having to pay housing costs at 50% of their income or more. That is untenable. I'm hoping that the people who have spoken before me and the issues brought forward will help at least some of you change your vote and look at a way to work within your budget and not place these taxes on poor people who can hardly pay for a home and a roof to keep over their heads.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Stanley Sims. He'll be followed by Doug Hahn.
Thank you for joining us. Name and address for the record.
Can you give me a minute warning instead of a?
I'll do it.
I love the city. They work with you. My name is Stanley Sims. For the purpose of this meeting, my address is 1010 Civil Ridge, because I grew up right here. Also, what I feel is very profound, my very first job, I got it right here, Ms. Commissioner Porter. I got that job through the CETA program, who then City Commissioner Curtis Richardson. City Commissioner Curtis Richardson and my mom are good friends. My mom worked as a clerk in the HR department, and he called my mom and said, hey, we've got some jobs, send your son on up here. I give that story because I speak from the heart. The gentleman who sat up here and spoke, I want to give a shout out to the HR director. Currently, right now, we have approximately 189 city employees that don't make $15 an 64% of them are black. Here's what surprised me, there's a lot of white folks too. But here's what I want to argue that I think is a special point. About 12% of these 180 people work at a city facility that collects revenue, Holoman Park, J. Gate Park. I think it's very discriminatory that the management that works at these facilities, they make a salary within market range.
You're at two minutes.
But the individuals who clean the carport, I mean, and mow the grass, they work below market rate. My last minute I want to dedicate to my security officers that are with me today, and that's the fire department. I'm not understanding the delay in the negotiations for their salary. And I speak from a personal point of view because my son right now is trying to be a fireman. And the credentials and the certification that our city requires ain't no joke. And I'm getting emotional. But I respect that. As a man who have struggled with high blood pressure, who falls out on public streets, it's good that when an EMT can't get there, those firemen are faster than the doggone EMTs.
You're at three.
Let's make it right.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Doug Hahn, and then Jimmy Dickey.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Doug Hahn, 2076 West Forest Drive here in Tallahassee in the Glendale neighborhood. Morning. In October, the city commission directed that $1 million each year be spent on gun violence mitigation. In subsequent meetings, it's been discussed and modified, but nonetheless, it's stuck in the city administration. We need the city commission to address distribution of the funds, approval of them, so that we can begin the work of ending the violence now. I, in Glendale, was motivated to work with gun violence mitigation groups on the local and state level when my neighbor, Dr. Nancy Van Deeson, was murdered, along with other citizens here in our mass shooting at the Hot Yoga Studio. We need to do something to staunch the blood. We need to do it now. Direct your city administrators to give full priority to approving the distribution of funds now, not tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Jimmy Dickey, followed by Will Crowley.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for having me. Good morning. I am Jimmy Dickey. I reside at 1929 Mary Ellen Drive here in Tallahassee, and I am a member of the Capitol Area Justice Ministry Affordable Housing Committee and the pastor of New Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church. Our city needs to acknowledge that our existing affordable housing programs and policies cannot solve the traffic jam of too little rental housing that families with very low and extremely low incomes can afford. Families with Section 8 housing vouchers continue to have difficulty finding safe, affordable, and accessible rental housing. Our community organizations that provide services to help unhoused families move into capable housing situations continue to have trouble placing them. Whenever Cajun raises the rental house crisis of pressing the 13,500 families with very low and extremely low incomes who are severely housing cost burdened, city commissioners and staff recite the city's recent affordable housing accomplishments. Approximately 3,000 affordable units have recently been constructed or are in the development pipeline, totaling more than the combined number of units built in Tallahassee over the last 25 years. Cajun has repeatedly acknowledged this good news, but we also have repeatedly demonstrated with the city's own affordable housing dashboard data that those nearly 3,000 new multifamily units principally serve households with higher incomes of 60%, 80%, or more of the area median income. There is clearly an affordable rental housing traffic jam for the families earning 50% or less and 30% or less of the area median income. Now is the time.
You're at two and a half minutes.
Commission to step up and take a new way forward that goes beyond current programs and policies that provide financial incentives to affordable rental housing developers to set aside greater numbers of units that families with very low and extremely low incomes can afford. My mother told me that I am my brother's keeper and that I should do unto others. My mother told me that I am my brother's keeper and that I should do unto others as I would have them to do unto me. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Will Crowley, followed by Lenoras Barber.
Great. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Will Crowley. I live at 2308 Cypress Cove Drive. You say this proposal is an investment in public safety. By this, you mean taking more money away from working families and giving it to the cops. A public safety plan that only funds more cops is like a dental plan that only covers root canals. That's because, you know, the truth is more cops won't fix crime. I know it's not politically correct to say this, but it's true. The most safe communities are not the ones with a ton of cops, militarized police force, the rook, any of this heavy machinery. The safest communities are those with the most resources. So in this time, when everyone's being asked to do more with less, why does it seem like that doesn't apply to the police department? Why is there always enough money for more police but not for anything else? And not only does it seem like there's always enough money for the police, it seems like there's enough political capital for the police, no matter what. We know it's not popular to pass through a tax increase. We've all talked to you for different reasons, what we want to see more public spending on, and we've always told, we can't push a tax increase through. That's too politically unpopular. But why are we, why is the TPD the only constituency, the only interest group that you're willing to burn this political capital for? Where is the tax increase for more housing? Why don't we see that in the budget? Is it because the police union fills your campaign coffers more than working class people ever could? The people of Tallahassee deserve a budget that reflects our values, just as we deserve leaders who put good governance over politics and personal gain. Now, I want to speak briefly to those who may have supported members of the prevailing majority in the past. And maybe you see this and you like it. You said, yes, I should take more money from poor families and give it to more cops. Maybe that's what you think. But if you're thinking for a moment that this is not what I signed up for two years ago, four years ago, however long ago, then I'm asking you to rethink your vote in this next election because we've got a very important seat that could change the dynamic on this board. So please, people, I'm asking you, think about who you're supporting. Think about the policies that you're supporting with your actions because you have the power to change it. You're the only ones who do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lenoras Barber. And then mayor, we'll see if our virtual registrants have connected.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Kay Lenoras Barber, 527 West Brivard Street. I want to encourage you guys to do all you can not to increase the milit rate. Want to ask that you ask Robert to take a look at his revenue forecast because, you know, I know that most budget writers, they really like to make really conservative revenue forecasts. So, and I'm willing to bet that if you look at the history of actuals, the forecast, the forecast is going to be less than the actual over some period of time. So, and when that happens, you're actually depriving folks of government services. So I'd like to ask that you, ask in the shop this pencil, look at those revenue forecasts. And if what I'm saying is true, then maybe we should just bump it up a little bit. And what I'm trying to get to is I want us to close that gap that you say exists where it mandates that we increase the rev, increase the milit rate. State statutes require that only 95% of your property tax can be budgeted each year. So that's 5% of those revenues is going to your, into your fund balance or reserves each year. Let me ask that you consider using more of the fund balance to balance your budget. I know Commissioner Richardson, you often say, we don't want to use one-time revenue sources to balance the budget. It should be a recurring revenue source. But in this case, it is because every year you're going to add that 5% going into your fund balance. And I know there are standards about what healthy fund balances are. I don't know what you're using. If you're using the GFAO standard, GF, GFAO standard, then that's the standard we should use. But if it's grossly above what's, what the benchmarks are, we should use more to balance the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor, we do not have any further speakers. We had one or two who had registered virtually, but neither has connected. So that concludes our public speakers.
All right. Anybody here want to have an opportunity to speak that haven't had a chance to fill out a card? Anybody from the public here? Okay, we'll close out public comment. We'll open it up for discussion, questions, directions. Colleagues.
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, Robert, could you tell me what the budget is for the South Side Transit Center?
Curtis, go ahead.
Yeah. Could you tell me what the total budget is for the South Side Transit Center?
Yes, Commissioner, that's in our capital budget. And it is budgeted at approximately $20 million.
Okay.
We do have a state award or a state recommendation for a million dollars. We are assuming some blueprint funding for that and then applying for federal awards for that.
Okay. And then the total budget for the, for Fire Station 17, the one that's proposed for Lake Bradford Road?
Yeah, the latest numbers on those are, we assumed $13 million in the rate study. I think we've recently had some new planning and design numbers. And, yeah, so we are at $12.8 million for, for that facility.
That's all I have for right now.
Commissioner Mattel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everybody for joining us today. I know this is a important conversation as we decide how our tax dollars are being spent. I'm going to go into detail, but I'm going to ask for two votes today, Mr. Mayor. One will be on funding $5 million for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, particularly for extremely low income individuals making under 30% of AMI. And the second I'll ask for is not to move forward with a milit rate increase. And I'll tell you why. Starting with affordable housing, frankly, we, as a community, we can't afford not to have affordable housing. And then we use this term a lot. And I think the question always comes back is affordable for who? Where are our dollars really being spent and who can afford them? And what we need to be focused on as a local government are the people living on the margins. Why? Because those are the people that end up in homelessness. Those are the people ended up needing additional revenues, additional resources from our local government because we're not meeting that bottom tier need of people living in our community. So when I think, when we look at our budget and we have to make tough choices, we are doing a lot to increase the housing supply. As stated earlier, people making 80% of AMI, 100% of AMI. But frankly, that's market rate. That's the, that's the middle income individual in our community. I don't think that's where our focus should be because the people who are slipping through the cracks, we're not doing enough for them. So even if that means redirecting resources from other affordable housing initiatives to help the people who need our help the most, I think that has to be on the table. But when we look at our total budget, we don't have a revenue problem in the city of Tallahassee. I mean, we're a very fortunate community. We have a property tax. We have a public utility. We have a penny sales tax for infrastructure, which state law allows us to acquire land, particularly for affordable housing. We have a children's services tax. We have a lot of revenues that we can look to, but the question is, how do we want to spend our money? What is the core focus of our spending? And if we think making sure we have enough housing for the least of these in our community is a priority, we could accomplish that and we could give the direction to accomplish that today. Because what's happening in housing, it's not just a supply problem. Yes, we need more supply, but we're working against forces from all over. We're working against Federal Reserve interest rates that dictate the price of housing. We're working against hedge funds coming up, buying up whole communities as investment properties, which is spiking the cost of housing. And frankly, when we raise property tax rates, we're sending signals to landlords all across the community that they should raise their rents as well. So I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot trying to solve one problem and create a much bigger problem. With that being said, I'm going to ask for a workshop, another budget workshop before final adoption, that comes back with a proposal to fund $5 million for an affordable, and do the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, particularly for, to create rental units, rental units at 30% of AMI or less. That's a motion.
Okay. There's a motion on the table for another budget workshop. I would assume at the end of August, beginning of September, before the, the public hearings that are scheduled, specifically directing staff to bring back a proposal for $5 million for affordable housing in rental units. Is that the motion on the table?
That's correct.
All right. There's a second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Porter. Let's have discussion on the motion. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm wondering if I could, and I was, thank you, Commissioner Mattel, for making that motion. I was going to make a similar motion. I had asked in an email, and we had this discussion at our last budget workshop about where, what options there were if we wanted to move forward. And I'm wondering why we're now two workshops in and that hasn't already been provided to us, if there's anyone who can address that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Porter, I apologize. Could you restate the question?
Sure. I guess it's something that we had brought up before about, I had asked our city manager if this was something that could be included in this future budget workshop. And I'm just wondering if there's a reason that it hadn't been included already for us to have this discussion about those options.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I'm not clear on what our direction was. We're acting upon your direction as a commission. I believe we're talking about the same thing, to bring back information about rental programs, what's done in other jurisdictions. Mr. Mayor, you talked about funding needs. We are working on that material. We've been scanning the market in other cities to put the information together. We've got that scheduled, I believe, for our August 23 meeting. I think, Commissioner Porter, is that what you're referring to, that information?
Yeah, I mostly just want to make sure that we're on the same page because I, we had had this discussion at our last budget workshop. And I understand the answer that was given, all the ways that we can't use certain sources of revenue to seed a trust like we're considering. I just want to make sure we're on the same, because that was something that I had asked and that I think we had asked and that I, we still haven't heard back from. So I'm mostly asking to make sure that we're on the same page. What I don't want to come back are reasons that we can't, that we can't do it with existing revenue sources that we get from state or federal grants, CDBG or whatever. I would like to see if the motion passes, that we see it's, the answer was, it needs to come from the general fund. So whatever it is, that is where it needs to come from if we're having that discussion to have, to consider alternatives. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then on that point, I just want to say, I want to thank Cajum and others. And I think that, you know, when we, we all take a lot of meetings, a lot of people have a lot of ideas in this community, but when a group of people, I mean, they said over 700 people at that meeting, that they were able to bring together across this community who've been working together for, for months, if not longer, when residents work together like that and they come to us for a proposal with a proposal, you know, I do feel a responsibility. I mean, we ask for community input all the time honoring that with at least saying, what would that look like? I think is just the respectful and right thing to do. And I hate that it's, that we're three workshops in and we still don't have an op, you know, an idea of what that would look like. And so I say that just because I know how seriously we all take community input. And I think being here today at the Smith Williams Center and is a great start, but changing where we have our meetings is not the end of how we do community input. And so I definitely think we need, I seconded the motion because I believe we need a second workshop. I would like to see, in addition to a workshop, if we could, I mean, I made this motion last time, it didn't really get anywhere, but I'd love to see us get even more creative about having, about staff leading input, whether it's a WebEx, you know, not quite a charrette, but, but more input. It's a big deal that we're, not only just the budget being a big deal, but the, the proposed milit rate increase that we're considering. So I don't want to muddy what was the, the original motion, but that's why I, I support it. Because, I mean, since I've been in office, I've never seen a group that represents so many people of such diverse walks of life come to us with that request. I think the least we can do is honor it by considering, taking it seriously so that we have all the information we need to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Porter, I would disagree with you in that Cajum's recommendations have not been taken seriously. I have attended every meeting that I've been invited to attend and others and have taken it seriously because it is a very serious issue impacting our community. We have, we have, in terms of setting our budget, our priorities for our strategic plan, we've taken input from, from citizens and residents across this community. We all know that, that affordable housing is an issue. As a matter of fact, when I came to the commission, one of the first things I did was to push to have South City included in the French Town South Side CRA so that we could redevelop and revitalize the Orange Avenue Apartments. And if you haven't been by there recently, that's happening. In addition to what was there, 500 additional units, we were just told, yes, in our CRA meeting, 500 additional units will be added to that development. And the majority of that, in, in the first two phases, maybe phase three, 100% will be affordable housing in the Orange Avenue Apartments. 100%. And so, and, and we've spent now, we were told, again at the CRA meeting, $6 million between city funds and CRA funds to make that project happen. They are doing all that they can, they, meaning Tallahassee Housing Authority, to locate more money for affordable housing in our community. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, where Karen Miller is our executive director. I can tell you, we're doing all that we can to address the affordable housing issue in this community. I can tell you, we are. We just considered a proposal that I'm hoping will be coming back to the commission soon after our break to, to provide 100 units on the site of the old Northwood Mall site that the city acquired. 100 units of affordable income housing. I'm also serving on the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Council. I'm just pointing to all of you what my issue has been and what I have done and what this commission has done in the city to address affordable housing throughout the city of Tallahassee. And I'm going to point out again, it's not just an issue in the city of Tallahassee. This is an issue throughout the state of Florida. the city of Tallahassee. This is an issue throughout the state of Florida and throughout the nation. And the city of Tallahassee is well ahead of where some other communities are in addressing this issue. All of us have to work together. We're working with Habitat for Humanity. I haven't heard many proposals to partner with Habitat to build affordable housing for those who are unhoused in our community. I haven't heard that. We are working with the Continuum of Care. We had hoped that we would be able to sell them property to build, I think it was close to 100 units of affordable housing for homeless veterans. So my point is that we've got lots of initiatives. We've had ordinance changes that have allowed former hotels and motels to be converted into affordable housing. And, you know, we say low income, but anybody that can't afford housing can become homeless. I understand the urgency. Certainly, I understand the urgency of, of housing for low-income individuals. I have them right in my neighborhood, the Tuskegee neighborhood, on the south side of Tallahassee, where I chose, my wife and I chose to live over 30 years ago, and to build our own and raise our family. Yeah, I know the urgency of affordable housing, because I live it every day. I see it in my own neighborhood. And I have committed myself personally. And I know this, this commission and this city have taken actions to address this issue. Maybe not as rapidly as some would want, but we, we have been committed to this issue. It is the second priority in our strategic plan. But how can you have housing without a safe community? How can you have investment in your community when people are constantly hearing about crime and shootings and killings? They're not going to come here to invest. They're not going to send their children to Florida A&amp;M University and Florida State University if they don't feel like they're sending them to a safe community. It's not going to happen, y'all. And so to suggest that we haven't done anything, that we aren't doing anything, is just not right. Now, you know, when, when you start talking about dedicating, just dedicating $5 million to a program, you have to determine where that money is going to come from. And I have said in the past, yeah, it could come from a millage rate increase, a property tax increase, or it could come from our general fund. But if it comes from the general fund, it has to come from somewhere. And it has to come from where those programs and services that the residents of this community have told us they want to see their tax dollars invested, not just from Cajum. But I mean, and I appreciate the work that Cajum has done, but, but, but this has been from, this has been from communities and input that we've taken throughout this community. I take it upon, again, I take it upon myself. People say, well, Curtis, when do you sleep? You're everywhere. I am that, because that's, I want to hear from the people who are on the ground impacted by this. And, and so that's where I also get my feedback from. And we have to take that as seriously as we take input from, from anybody else. If, if the city manager can tell us programs and services that we would have to cut to, to make this happen, I would want to hear it, but I haven't heard it yet. And so, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, if that's what we need to address, I would not have a problem with a workshop, but we need to know that that's what people throughout this community want. If there are programs and services that would have to be cut or go unfunded in order to address this issue, more so than what we're already addressing. As a matter of fact, we've got a, an ordinance coming up. I think we're addressing it at this evening's meeting, where, where we're going to hopefully have a new revenue source for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund through abandoned properties that banks own, that they're not keeping up. It's a code enforcement issue. So again, we, we have looked at so many options for addressing this issue. It's not like it's been ignored. And, and for me, from a personal perspective, this was always a top priority for me coming to, to the commission, because I saw it in the very neighborhood where I live and have lived for 30 years now, and am still committed to addressing that issue. But I can tell you, having also lived in that neighborhood, my neighbors tell me that public safety is an issue for them. It is an issue for them. Where a young man was shot and killed within walking distance from my house on our church grounds. Yeah, public safety is an important issue for them. No, we can't police our way out of it. We say that all the time. But it certainly helps to have a police officer available when things like that happen. It's not easy, but again, and in closing, it's going to take all of us working together, not ramrodding a solution because it's what you think ought to happen, but all of us working together and getting input from across this community on how to continue to address these very serious issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Let me jump in real quick, and then I've got Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem, I got Commissioner Matlow, again, I got Commissioner Porter. We'll just keep the conversation going. So, Robert, I'm assuming if the motion passes, what we're looking at is having another workshop, and you're going to bring back. And it's pretty simple, one of two things. Either you're going to have to cut $5 million out of general revenue to fund a $5 million trust fund, or you're going to leave it up to us to figure out where to cut $5 million, or you're going to come back, or maybe both, come back with a proposal to increase a proposed millage increase to the tune of an additional, whatever it would take to cover $5 million. I mean, that's pretty simple, one or the other, cut or add, cut or add. I, I'm going to propose something different. I don't think any of us disagree of the need for low-income and very low-income housing. I don't think any of us disagree that we need more product. I mean, somehow, we need to come up with a solution to build more affordable housing. As it has been mentioned, the question is your source of revenues, and how do you move forward from there? You know, I think that we're also expected as leaders to think creatively and continuously think creatively. And I'm trying to avoid a pitting this against that situation. Our property tax revenues are in a position where we already have a proposed millage rate on the table. However, when we look at our community and when we look at other revenue resources, I believe that we might have even a greater opportunity to make a positive difference. I am not in favor of scrapping the programs that we currently have at the city. I think we need to continue moving forward. I really do. I think we need to continue moving forward with our partnerships through CHSP and outside of CHSP, dealing with affordable housing and very low-income housing in this community. But there's a conversation that we have bantered around a little bit over the years, but we've never actually truly jumped into formally, and I think it's time to formally jump into. We were scheduled to have a blueprint budget workshop tomorrow. It's been postponed until August 24. I think that is very appropriate at that budget workshop. While our property taxes, we're debating whether or not to raise the millage rate, the sales tax that funds the blueprint has shown significant increases in the projections over the life of the penny for the next 20 years, to the tune of about $100 million. We talk about 5 million. I think we actually, if we could come together as a community, probably even have a greater impact. What I would propose is that instead of supporting this motion today, as a city, I'm hoping all five of us together can join in. And when we go to this blueprint budget workshop on the 24th of August, not only address the issues that are before us then, but formally bring forward with our partners and our colleagues at the county, the formal conversation of using economic development dollars. Now, let's remember, the infrastructure dollars are set, and they are set by referendum as approved by the citizens of Leon County. We don't have much flexibility with there. But I would charge legal, for the city, the county, and Blueprint to sit down and analyze our proposed economic development dollars, which as we do now know, since the last workshop, we have additional unallocated dollars that are available. Affordable housing is not just a problem in the city of Tallahassee. Our good friends, and I see Commissioner Proctor joined us in the back of the room. It's good to see you, sir. It is something that they're discussing on the county commission level as well. And quite frankly, it needs to be discussed on the regional level. I think we have a greater opportunity to make a positive impact financially by going through Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency. We say 5 million. We might even have the opportunity to go through more. But then the second step is not just throwing money. You've got to have a plan. And what I would suggest is that as the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency, we have a joint city-county Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And I would formally charge them, as both the city and the county through Blueprint, and you are the chair of Blueprint, Commissioner Richardson, that we charge the Joint Affordable Housing Committee to come up with the plan. Now, I absolutely agree with Cajum. When part of the issue that we need to address is incentivize to build a new product, we need more product. And we have to come up with ways to incentivize development, quite frankly, that want to build low-income and very low-income housing in this community. I think that the appropriate conversation for that to begin are these fine, dedicated people that have been serving on the Joint Affordable Housing Advisory Committee from the city and the county. Charge them with coming up with the plan, while the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency formally sets aside the money through the Economic Development Funds, which I believe we can, because we are going to be, in theory, building housing and adding to the economy. I don't know if we're going to create the solution by passing the motion on the table of either adding more to a proposed millage rate or cutting $5 million out of the budget that Robert and his team have been working so hard for the past six months on. I do think that we have a creative solution. I do think that we have the opportunity as a city, the five of us, to truly come together and send a message. And yes, look, I hate having the conversation of pitting, well, affordable housing is number two and public safety is number one. No, they're both extremely important. So it's our responsibility to think as creatively as we possibly can to tackle both issues. So I am going to respectfully not support the motion on the table. But Commissioner Richardson, as the chair of the Intergovernmental Agency, I am telling you, as the mayor of the city, at the August 24 budget meeting for the Intergovernmental Agency, after we take care of the business that will be before us that day, I would like to formally propose that we have a healthy conversation and join our colleagues at the county in formally addressing affordable housing, low-income housing, very low-income housing, through the revenue streams of the Intergovernmental Agency, economic development funds, and talk about how we could put together a plan using the Joint Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
Yes.
To help us develop that plan to execute. So I will not be supporting the motion on the table right now. I've got.
Point, Mr. Mayor, just.
Sure.
I, I do want to commend Cajum for the recommendation that they made, that we, that we do come together, because I suggested that we use the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee as an avenue for having a workshop.
Sure.
To address this issue. And so I think it would be very appropriate to include Cajum and our other partners from throughout the community in that particular workshop.
And the.
If that's the route we take.
And I believe the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is, look, I'm not a builder. I'm not a developer. I don't know what goes into, from the very beginning to the very end, of building apartment complexes. Our Affordable Housing Advisory Committees, the city has one, the county has one, and they come together as a joint body. On that board, you have elected officials. Commissioner Richardson represents us. Commissioner Maddox represents the county. You have real estate professionals. You have developers. You have teachers. You have people from all walks of the community, and this is what the focus is of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So I think that putting together some of the expertise, having conversations, which is their focus, and putting together a plan of what can work to incentivize to build more product is the right way to go. So that's where I stand. I got the Mayor Pro Tem, and then I believe, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Porter, or vice versa, but we'll make sure everybody's got the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I just, I wanted to kind of weigh in a little bit. I wanted to say to Cajum, absolutely, thank you for your advocacy, and thank you for what you're doing. But prior to Cajum, there have been other groups through the years. There have been many groups who've come together to, to get what we have, really. I know this because I too was a part of that before I was elected. You don't have to be elected to be effective. I say that all the time, because it is true. So thank you, Cajum. But I wanted to point out that there are groups that, and there are still groups. And so what we have, what I do, I have to be very careful. I try not to prioritize one group over another group. I want to hear all groups and be able to make a balanced decision. We have a strategic plan that we did put together years ago, and we, we've been working our plan. And without having a plan, you have chaos. And so what we've been trying to do is to have some managed progress on our strategic plan, which does include public safety. It includes affordable housing. It includes, at the insistence that I, that I made, and I think I first retreat after I became to the commission, to make sure poverty is in our strategic plan. You got to spell it. You got to put it in there. Because if you don't put it in there, it doesn't get measured, and it doesn't get done. And so affordable housing is just a piece of the poverty puzzle. And I agree that we do need to look at how to cut the pipeline. And what we're doing is, we have tempo. We have TIFLA, because you've got to put money in pockets so that people can do things, so they can live. And so we, we created these programs. We partnered with others to try to make sure that we get our youth involved. I remember, and I've said this before, I want to say it again, several years ago, we asked the TIFLA kids, what are you going to do with your first paycheck? They didn't say go buy the New Jordans. They said they were going to go buy food. That's important. And you've heard others talk about having summer jobs. I had summer jobs. My, my jobs weren't in air conditioning. I had, I was in the field working. But the point is, we're trying to eradicate poverty. It doesn't happen overnight. And we're trying to do that with some systemic, sustainable programs. And so affordable housing is a part of that. Economic development is a part of that. Healthcare. No, no one's talking about healthcare. You cannot have a good housing or community or educational situation without access to proper healthcare. Yeah, I'm, I'm managing the healthcare system right now for, for my husband. And it's hell. And I got a little education. I got some people who can help me. But that's where a lot of people are suffering from. They don't have access to good healthcare, and they don't know how to navigate this system. So we're losing folks because of that. So I don't want to, again, pit one thing against the other, public safety, housing, all of, we've talked about getting grocery stores in communities so they have healthy food choices. My point is, as a, as a commission, as policymakers, we're trying to identify and solve societal, community, all kinds of ills. And we, we, I don't like pitting one above the other or over the other. I'm happy to do however many workshops, however many WebExes, however many one-on-ones, however many whatevers that we need to do. But at the end of the day, we got to stop talking and get the work done, make a decision, and move. Hopefully, this won't be the last time, the last year we have, have to deal with budgets. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to do it again next year and the year after. We don't know. You know, we see what's happening in the world. We don't know. So I want to do what I can right now to make sure that we fill the gap that we have here now, so that we can prepare for the future. But my eye is always on, down the road, because we're here right now, but we're going to leave the stage one day, and somebody's going to inherit. We inherited some, some issues, and we tried to deal with those issues. And unfortunately, they were issues that we had nothing to do with. But we had to clear those issues out so that we could do what we needed to do. So I'm in favor of the mayor, the suggestion. I think that what happens many times is that we may not know all of the different pots of government or where budgets are and what have you. So we go to the one that we know. But when I talk to people in the community, I talk, I make sure that they understand, there's the CRA bucket, there's the blueprint bucket, there's the county bucket, there's the city bucket. So it doesn't matter. So it doesn't matter where the money comes from to do what you need to do, as long as it's legal and as long as it resolves the issue. The city doesn't have to carry the load by themselves. We have a blessing in this community, but it's also a curse. We have one city in the county. Can you imagine if we were Broward or Orange or where you have multiple cities? Here, we can focus, and here we can work together with our county government to make sure that everyone, whether you live in the city limits or in the unincorporated areas, because you know, you just, in some places, you just cross the street and you're in another jurisdiction. So I hope that we can come together and work. It's not a, this is not a wrestling match. We want everyone to win. I want to win, I like winning. And I don't feel like I'm winning if I can't see it in our community. So we are winning in many areas. I hope that we will continue to do what we can work together, as has been said, that all five of us can agree on. I think we agree, we've got some problems, there's some issues. I won't call it a problem, we have some opportunities that we need to work on. And so I'm hoping that if another workshop is desired, or we need to go to Blueprint and workshop it there where we can all come together, let's just get it done. Citizens expect us to do some things and not just be talking about it or arm wrestling over it or pointing fingers, but let's just get it done so that we show our children that we as adults, and I said this the other night to some young folks, we as adults, we're not doing it right. Some of us are not doing it right. And they see us, they see how we're not doing it right, and they're calling us out on it. So the Gen Zers and whoever's in the room, we're going to do it right, we're going to do better so that you inherit better than what we inherited, and so that you can carry it on. And one final thing, I'm sitting here, I got a call just before I got here from my insurance agent. We're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about rent. My insurance agent, property insurance agent, just called me and told me that my property insurance for some rental property that I have has doubled from $1,500 to $3,000. That's where the real affordable issue is.
Excellent.
But what did we do about that? The legislature has not addressed it enough so that we can deal with it on an individual basis. So I encourage us to continue to advocate, to do something about this property insurance issue that we have here in Florida. We're in hurricane season right now, as we sit here, and y'all know what the weather's projected to be today. What are we doing to make that affordable so that we can have affordable housing, so people can continue to live in their houses or get their houses rebuilt when they're damaged from a storm? Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't feel like I'm pointing fingers, I don't feel like I've said that people don't care about this issue. I know that Cajum's not the only group, but if we are taking seriously what was their request, then that would include an option of what that would look like if we were to move forward. That doesn't commit us to anything, but if we do not have the information, we need to consider options and alternatives, then we cannot make decisions. I'm aware that we have a limited budget, and that if we invest in some places, that means we are disinvesting in others. That is why we have these workshops, so that the community can weigh in on what is most important to them, and so that we can weigh in on what is most important to us. If we don't have that information, we can't make those decisions. I think there are a lot of people who would say, I would pick this over this, I would pick this over this. The community understands that they can't have it all. We understand we can't have everything that we want. That's why that information is so critical. And I just really quickly, you know, since the topic of more workshops has come up specifically on addressing affordable housing, I want to list a couple of things that the city could have done and now cannot do because it's being preempted by the state legislature, things that I wasn't necessarily familiar with, and things that frankly, I would have expected staff to have brought to us who do housing. And a lot of these are done in other Florida cities, and most of these are ordinances that would have cost us no money to implement. Source of income protection, so that if you're on a fixed income, on social security, on disability, a unit cannot discriminate against you for where your money comes from. Eviction diversion programs, a tenant's bill of rights that spells out what your rights are as a tenant and what your responsibilities are as a landlord, as well as your rights as a landlord. An office of housing advocacy, anti-harassment policy ordinances, rent stabilization, pay to stay, so that if you're behind on your rent, you can work on a rental agreement with your landlord so that you can stay. Rental registries, along with dedicated housing code inspections, so that we know that we can maintain what already is affordable housing in good shape and high-quality living. Making accessory dwelling units easier to build, so that we're not just depending on big developers or affordable housing developers to come into town, but it's something that everyday people can do, not only to provide housing, but to provide and build wealth. Reducing minimum lot sizes, making it cheaper for people of every kind to develop and build. Increasing density limits and/or height restrictions, reducing or eliminating parking minimums because parking is a huge part of the increase in cost for housing. Write a first refusal or tenant opportunity to purchase. If you've been in a house long enough, you have the right to purchase that house if it's being sold. Tenant relocation fee assistance, so that if people need to leave, they have the support to do it without ending up on the street. And giving more support to our legal services who do an amazing job telling people what their rights are and protecting them from predatory landlords. Everything I mentioned here keeps people in their homes. We could have acted on, we didn't, never even came to us, and now we're preempted from doing it. So when I say we aren't doing everything we can do, that is a fact. It doesn't negate anything that we've done in the past, it doesn't negate anything that we are doing now or preparing to do, but it is simply not true. We can have debate about what we view as our role as local government, what our priorities are, what we can afford, what is reasonable, what fits with our community, but it should not be viewed as an absolute, like, criticism of everything we've ever done to say that I believe so much in this community, and my heart breaks just like everyone else's when we see the pain and suffering there is out there, to say that we've done all we can do. And as far as I know, I'm the only renter on this commission, and my rent has gone up $500 in the past several years. And I am in much better shape than most people in this community, and I am grateful, but it is stressful. And people who are renters are bearing the brunt and the burden more than anyone else. And almost all of our policies and programs are geared towards homeowners, homeowner assistance, and that is great and necessary, and we need it. But we do not focus like I believe that we should and have an opportunity to for renters. And that is why I think that recommendations from Cajum and any other recommendations from other groups who I know we all meet with are important to take seriously and consider. And when I say take seriously, I mean that we have a proposal in front of us so that we can actually be equipped with the information we need if we want to move forward or not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll keep this brief. A lot of the time, and first, I want to, you know, thank you for bringing a constructive alternative forward. I do support bringing that to Blueprint, but I also support continuing our conversation at the city of Tallahassee. This is just a conversation, it's just a workshop with facts of how we can get it done within the city. We don't know what Blueprint will decide because it's a 12-member body, we can't predict that, but we can't have both conversations and decide in tandem what we want to do. And I do agree, I think Blueprint can do a lot more in supporting housing. When Fannie Way was built and Boyan Still was demolished, I suggested any affordable housing demolished by our road construction should be rebuilt, unit for unit. What we learned from Legal at that point in that program was we were limited to only land purchases for affordable housing, and we couldn't actually construct affordable housing with infrastructure dollars. But I do think it's a worthy conversation and exploring economic development dollars as well, does make sense. That doesn't preclude anything we can do at the city. So the question on the table is, should we have a workshop to look at dedicating $5 million in city revenue to housing, for rental housing that is for people that made 30% of AMI or below? That doesn't negate the great programs. Habitat's a great program, that's homeownership. The Orange Avenue Development is fantastic, but even what we just approved yesterday, that's only 13 units for people under 30% of AMI. So if we're focused on just that, what's the question? What are we trying to solve? How do we get the lowest-income people into housing? That's what the question before us today. And the workshop, we can elaborate on that and how we fund it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mayor Pro Temp.
Commissioner Matlow, your Orange Avenue apartments only have 13 units?
For the senior center, the senior, the phase three that we adopted yesterday, the million dollars in funding, only 13 of the 90 units are for people making 30% or less of AMI.
Okay, let's clear that up, that's phase three.
Which is the
We got phase one and two, and that was just
Phase four coming on to
102-year-olds.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, let's get me
I was talking about what we approved yesterday.
Okay, yeah, but I think that went over my head, so I may have covered everybody else's ear too, I want to be sure.
Well, yesterday it was proposed, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, and then phase three, it was mentioned about the senior assisted living, which is what Commissioner Matlow is specifically referring to, but it does not paint the entire picture of Orange Avenue. Now, I for one am going to say that I respectfully disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Porter. It is as much our responsibility as elected officials to bring items to the table for consideration and to bring new ideas, where then staff also carries out the direction, the formal direction of this board. So I would strongly encourage my colleagues to consistently bring new ideas to the table and to bring, create a thought to the table so that we can proactively move this community forward. It is not just staff's responsibility. In fact, I would say, we as the five electeds share the largest majority of the responsibility to bring creative ideas and new policy to the table for consideration. The motion on the table is for an additional budget workshop, where still staff brings back recommendations on how to provide additional $5 million for the affordable housing, proposed affordable housing trust fund for specifically low-income and very-low-income housing. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
And the motion fails 3-2 with Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, and Commissioner Richardson in dissent. Mayor Pro Temp.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that hopefully will encompass what we're trying to accomplish here. I do not have a problem with having a workshop scheduled after the Blueprint conversation, but what I want to caution us on is to come to the table with a mindset of $5 million. Because if there is an opportunity to have more, I want to be able to consider that as well. I don't want us to limit it. I also don't want us to get into the habit of coming to, having a workshop on just one particular issue. If we're not, I want us to have a holistic workshop on not just housing, but on the other factors that causes poverty. And we know there are many, but when we start, you fix this, and then something pops out over here. Why not just have a workshop on looking at strategies that we can keenly focus on eradicating poverty, which would include housing? And if, you know, we were able to find dollars to do that, great. But it's not just housing, it's healthcare, it's education, it's, there are a lot of things. And I know we think we have school board who can handle that, but they too need help to figure out this community ills. So I don't want the workshop to be so limited. But first of all, I think that we should do the Blueprint, and I'll shape it in a motion in just a minute, I'm going to just get my thoughts out. I think we should have a conversation at Blueprint, and following that conversation at Blueprint if necessary, then we could go into a workshop. But I don't want the workshop to be limited to a $5 million
Correct.
trust for housing, because then the next group that comes along will say, we want a $5 million trust for healthcare, we want a $5 million trust for, so let's look at what we can do holistically and not put a limited price tag on it.
So we have, staff is recommending option one, which includes four points. A is what Commissioner Matlow was addressing specifically, which is a proposed millage rate of 4.5 mils. B is simply to continue to provide feedback on the proposed fiscal year '24 budget. C is to affirm the process for the scheduled budget hearings. And D is to accept the fiscal '23 third quarter updates. If I could just clear the table, does anybody have any questions on D, accepting the fiscal '23 third quarter update?
Move acceptance of option D, option one D?
Second.
Okay, option one D has been promptly moved by the Mayor Pro Temp and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Are there any questions? Any questions, comment? All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay, so we're back on the recommended options, A, B, and C.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. And yeah, the second questions I had particularly pertaining to the millage rate increase. Since our last meeting, I believe you said we had a 35% reduction. Where was that revenue found from?
I'm sorry.
Was there a 35% reduction in the ask of the millage rate? Is that the right number?
No, it was our April meeting estimated that with a 14% increase in the police department budget, to balance the budget, we would recommend a 4.72 mils millage rate, based on estimates that we received from Leon County. And our understanding of some of the history, we mirrored some of their estimates, we moved our 4.72 to 4.6, refining the numbers. As of June 1st, we received the property appraiser estimated property tax values, and that's where we arrived at the 4.5 mils. And so it's the comparison between the 4.72 and the 4.5 mils that is a 35% change since our original estimate.
Robert, Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt, because that's, I want to make sure we answer the question completely.
Thank you.
That only answers a portion of it. The revenue, in fact, that's the lesser of the equation. There are multiple components that involve revenue and expenses. So I think we need to, just so we're clear answering the question, the change was not only because of revenue, it was partially because of revenue. And Robert, if you can also include the expenses, I think that'll be helpful.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. So over time, as we look at what our results are from the third quarter and what we need to budget in fiscal year '24, we looked at where our revenues were from the property taxes. On the expense side, we recognized that in order to close the gap of the, there's about a $6 million gap that we needed to close, because on an annual basis, the police department budget has to find additional revenue. We then looked to see, okay, what are some recurring revenues, or, I'm sorry, what are some recurring expenses that could be adjusted? One of those was capitalized wages. Where are we going to arrive at for our capital budget, and where could we expense some of those wages in our general government areas and public infrastructure and community facilitation? We identified that the wage growth should be at $2,000 rather than the $2,500, and then the other areas, we needed to replenish the special insurance reserve. And so in working with the Treasury Clerk's Office, rather than doing that in one year, we went through a multiple-year process of building that back up to where the estimates are for policy.
Okay. And what other expenses from our last workshop to this one have been cut?
We did not, we, part of our assumptions is that we want, we, in order to deliver the programs and in order to deliver the programs and strategic plan success that we've had, we need to maintain the services in parks and recreation, in public, public, public works, which is community beautification and roads and streets. And, and then also in the police department. And so no other changes were made in expenditures.
Okay.
You know, when we talk about a $9.5 million change and a change in expenditures by reducing expenditures, those choices are very limited. We're talking about landscaping, we're talking about cybersecurity, we're talking about, those costs that are required to support the services of the, of the, of the staff that do the work on behalf of the strategic plan.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think anybody looking to fill a $9 million deficit, that's daunting. But the question is, where can we cut $100,000? Where can we cut $500,000? Where can we cut $1 million? How, how much closer can we eliminate this gap? Because the decrease in the millage rate from the projections from the property appraiser, that's simply because people's properties are valued higher and they're going to be paying higher taxes anyway without us raising the millage rate. So that is more money that we're asking the public to, to fund our, our services with. So I mean, I do think we need to look citywide, department-wide, you know, item by item of how we can get a lot closer to reducing this deficit that we found ourselves in this year. So I have several suggestions and I think, you know, some of them will probably give some folks more heartburn than others. But what we're asking right now is we're asking our citizens, the people in Tallahassee, to pay more, to pay more for services than they've, they've ever done before. So I mean, these aren't to go into detail right now, but with just some estimates, we look at across the board, we're looking at 5% pay increases for, for city staff. I think even if we looked at the top earners in the city of Tallahassee, people making in excess of $100,000 and saying, should it be a 5% increase for those workers this year? Or should it be 2.5% or 3% or 1%? Where can we find some savings? You know, I think we could, we could find $500,000 to $1 million in savings just on the upper echelon of wage earners in, in the city of Tallahassee. I think if we look at reducing overtime, we could save $1 million. I think if we look at reducing non-essential travel expenses, this is travel to places that aren't for specific workforce training. These are the things that we routinely get criticized for, like junkets to Amelia Island with the Chamber of Commerce. I think we can find several hundred thousand dollars in savings. When we look at our city compared to the comparable cities that we like to compare ourselves with in the municipal cost index, we're paying twice as much as those cities in upper management, in ACMs and city managers. We're paying $1.5 million for those management positions where other cities are paying $500,000, maybe $600,000. I think we can look at reducing the operating and, you know, lead by example, reduce the operating expenses of the city commission and the mayor. Not a huge savings, but I think if we reduce it 20%, we'd save $50,000. If we look at, if we, if we really dug into line items and we looked at sponsorships and special events and advertising, we're paying $6,000 in advertising to Tallahassee Reports. $10,000 for the Village Square, that they do one forum with city commissioners a year. $10,000 to choose Tallahassee. $21,000 to the Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce. You get to 100, 200 pretty quickly. And it's not to say that these aren't great programs or these aren't things that should be supported. But why are we asking for more money to support them? If we're not willing to cut what's not an essential government service? People want to know when they pick up the phone that there's going to be a, a fire response that's close by. That's essential. They want to make sure when they pick up the phone that the police are going to respond in a timely manner. They want to make sure when they drive home, they're not going to be, you know, breaking their cars in, in potholes that, that, that aren't being repaired. They're not going to care where our advertising dollars are going. They're not going to care where all, where all of this, these, these special funding amounts are going. Does that all equal $9 million? Maybe not. Probably equals four or five. We could definitely reduce that. And I think going further, I mean, looking at whole departments, the, the department, and this wouldn't be for, for this budget round, because I think it would take some forethought, but the Department of Strategic Innovation, this was created in 2016. That's a relatively new department created by Rick Fernandez and doesn't, and they do great work, but it's not a core function of our government. I think we should look to that department to give people opportunities to seek employment elsewhere in the city of Tallahassee. And let's just scrap it. Have departments that do public work, ran by directors, department directors, that deliver the services that we expect. And my last question is going to be, I know the last couple of years, at the end of the year, we've done lead buybacks. Are we anticipating doing a lead buyback this year?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, this time we don't have any recommendation to do that. The last couple of years, we've done it based on our evaluation of where lead balances, or I'm not sure, we, we had that same situation. That was a pandemic-induced result. So I don't believe we'd recommend that this year. We're not recommending it this time.
Okay, okay, no, no, I think that's good. So my final point, I mean, we can't afford to continue to do these things if we're building, digging a deeper hole. And lastly, on the budget amendments, what was the total of the budget amendments being proposed?
Total was six.
One, we just accepted.
$7.3 million. And I'll, I'll note that those are allocated accounts. So to the general fund, none of those, none of those amounts impact the general fund.
Okay. So in, in, in closing, when, when we look at the budget, what I, where I'm, where I'm having issue is we're not seeing evidence that true savings were looked for. We're not seeing, we, we've seen minor savings presented, but we're not seeing evidence that shows raising taxes is serious and it should be urgent to not raise taxes by any, any way we can. And until we see that effort, we can't, in good faith, ask people to, to give us more of their hard-earned money when we know it's going to raise the cost of housing and it's going to disproportionately affect people who frankly can't afford it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go back to make the motion that I talked about because I think we need to go to a solution. My motion is that we do go to blueprint and bring this issue to blueprint and following the discussion at blueprint, that we look at having a, if needed, we look at having a workshop to address issues of poverty that we can really put a dent in here in the city of Tallahassee.
Say it.
It's been promptly moved to second.
On point. The motion is for us to go to, are we directing? Who's going to blueprint?
For the city to formally go before blueprint at the August 24th meeting and propose a formal conversation on a $5 million, or I won't put a price tag on it.
Don't put a price.
But to formally address the affordable housing opportunities that I believe exist through economic development dollars at blueprint. Did I, did I put that together all right?
That's correct, that's correct.
Sure.
Are we, are we asking the city manager, a member of the IMC, to schedule, make sure that's on the agenda? Or are we just going to bring that up and have to take a vote? Item?
My motion was clear. I didn't mention the city manager, didn't have him in mind. We as directors can bring items before blueprint, and that is my intent.
Okay, we don't need a motion to, to bring something up at a blueprint meeting? That's my, that's my confusion.
The motion is, I'm trying, I'm trying to get the workshop you're asking for.
Okay.
And, but I'm saying, let's go to blueprint first. And depending on the conversation there, then schedule a workshop to deal with the issues of poverty, which would include housing, trust fund, other issues that are impacting our community.
All right, the motion on table. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, wow, passes unanimously 5-0. Excellent. We are back on the recommended options A, B, and C. Option, let's take them one by one. Option A. Mayor Protem.
I'm of acceptance of option number 1A.
1A, which is approve a tentative fiscal year 24 millage rate of 4.5 mils. Is there a second to, I will second the motion. Let's have enough for conversation.
Mayor.
Sure.
You know, again, public safety has been identified as the number one priority for this community, by this community. Every time you pick up a newspaper, every time you turn on the local news, 39 shootings in the city of Tallahassee since January. We're not through June yet. Those are the ones that were reported. 39 shootings. If we don't have a community that is safe, again, those parents are not going to send their kids here to school. Businesses are not going to consider relocating to our community. Those are the kinds of issues that parents and businesses and visitors consider when they talk about coming to the city of Tallahassee. Are we going to police our way out of it? No. Anybody with common sense would know, we're not going to police our way out of crime in our community. But we need a police presence. And our numbers show that we are far below in terms of population where we should be in terms of our police presence to address the violent crime issue in our community. We've already committed the million dollars to the GBI initiative, to Crime Stoppers, to restorative justice, a million dollars there. Because we were serious about the fact that we wanted to address this violent crime issue in our community. This is another opportunity for us to further address that issue. Secondly, many of you may not have heard, but the governor proposed a huge increase in salaries for state police officers. And this is happening across the state of Florida. So if we don't increase our police officer salaries to be commensurate with what we've seen in other areas, we're going to lose quality police officers here in the city of Tallahassee if their salaries aren't competitive. So that's the other issue that we're addressing through this millage increase, is, is being able to keep highly qualified, quality police officers and to be able to attract them and keep them from going to other agencies where they can make more money. That is being addressed here as well. And it's certainly something as, as, as policymakers, we have to be cognizant of and look down the road to see how, in, in fact, it would affect not, not just our police department, but crime in our community. And I think this is a way to do that. And so that's why I will be supporting the motion.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, I, I made the motion and I, I, I just believe that this is where we need to go and this is where we need to be. When I look around, I talk, you know, Commissioner Richardson, yourself and myself, we're involved with the League of Cities. And when we're looking at, when we get with our colleagues from across the state and we hear what's going on in these places and what they're doing, we, the capital city, cannot be lesser than these other places. Now, I talked to my, my good friends next door over in Midway. The millage rate in Midway is 4.5. And if you just, just think about the services that we are, we're a regional hub. We're providing services to our surrounding areas. And so they're not having to charge for some of the things that we provide, during hurricanes or what have you. I just believe that we don't need to be caught flat-footed when we need to be ready to respond to what is going, what, what may be happening in our region. And in order to do that, we've got to make sure we have the personnel and people in place to do that. We're also an economic driver. The employment, the, the, was it 4,000 employees for the city of Tallahassee? The 4,000 employees for the city of Tallahassee, they need that money to keep their households going. They also need, we need them to have that to keep the city going because they're spending dollars just like everybody else. We're all taxpayers. And I wouldn't ask anybody to do anything that I'm not willing to do. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do my part. And so I, I absolutely, I made this motion and I, I support it.
Commissioner Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm opposed, raising taxes without making any earnest effort to reduce expenses in departments across the city is, is bad management. Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'm going to weigh in before we take the vote. And I am going to support the motion on the table and I'm prepared to go to the budget public hearings, which we have two scheduled. And so, look, folks, this is obviously not easy. And this is one of these situations where everybody in the room's not going to walk out completely happy, including the five of us. We all have our issues that are near and dear to our heart, and this is part of the process. But I'm here to tell you that I appreciate the budget staff and the hard work that y'all are doing trying to bring us in on a balanced budget and not cutting services. Now, I get it, you can score political points by ticking this off, ticking that off, you know, minor dollars, but that's not going to make the fiscal impact of the question before us of a proposed increase in millage. And not, you're talking about drastic cuts. Now, all departments, but the police department, has been held level, correct, Robert? We're not proposing a single increase in service whatsoever.
Correct.
So Commissioner Richardson's right. You know, with the, the, the state of Florida increasing starting pay for law enforcement, and this is a state law enforcement town, we're surrounded by several agencies. In order for us to be able to stay competitive and be able to hire, we had to seriously consider, which we did pass during the union agreement, the salary increases. But we're also talking about other functions. And let's talk about what our ad valorem taxes pay for. Now, I will say, I was a little disappointed. I heard public testimony earlier talking about the senior staff that we hired. Let's be very clear, there are 14 funds that make up the overall budget of the city of Tallahassee. And let's also remember that senior staff's salary does not come just from ad valorem. It's not 100% ad valorem. In fact, correct me if I'm wrong, but senior staff, for the most part, senior staff's salary, 20% of their salary comes from ad valorem.
That, that's accurate. As, as you may recall, we did an audit last year that, where we looked at our allocated account process, which identifies executive services, communications, strategic innovation, resource management, technology and innovation, and those are allocated across the 14 funds.
So when we talk about, thank you, when we talk about senior salary, if you, if senior staff, if you want to have the conversation about salaries, you actually need to look a holistic approach at the budget of all 14 funds that play in, not just ad valorem. Again, you're not going to make drastic cuts in ad valorem for senior staff salaries that would truly make the difference of not raising or lowering the millage rate. So then we talk about the services that we provide. Let's talk about the services. We're, we are, with this proposed budget, holding all departments at the same level of service. Okay? Where are we going to cut? Are we going to cut animal services, which is paid for out of general fund? Are we going to close down the shelter two days a week? Are we not going to do the improvements on the Jack McLean pool that needs a new liner? That's a CIP project that comes out of general fund. Are we not going to repair the elevators so that people that need elevators can get to the second story of the city facilities? Are we not going to repair the air conditioners, which is one of the CIP projects as well? We're going to expect people in August to work with no air conditioning. I mean, people sometimes seem to think that these are big sexy projects when really we're talking a lot about maintenance. Are we going to shut down our parks three days a week? Because parks and recreation is fully funded out of general revenue. I tell you what, why don't we cut the senior center half of the year and not offer any services? That is paid for 100% through general revenue. If we're going to be serious about major cuts, let's have that conversation. And I'm open to know, what major cut? Are we going to cut $2 million out of the neighborhood first program? That is fully funded out of general revenue. See, the entire city of Tallahassee budget, actually, the largest majority of the budget is paid for out of the other funds, correct, Robert?
That's accurate.
The smallest part of the city budget is paid for out of ad valorem. And so as a result, there are very specific departments that are fully funded. And in fact, we're talking. And in fact, we're talking Neighborhood Affairs, Parks and Recreation, Animal Services, and the Police Department, along with the Senior Center. So if we're going to talk about drastic cuts, that's where we start with services. I, for one, think that the city of Tallahassee residents do want level service, and so I'm going to support the motion on the table. There's a motion for option A that was made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by the mayor. Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And maybe we budget differently, but if you have to spend an extra dollar, you have to raise an extra dollar. It's dollar for dollar is how budgets work. And, you know, in my comments, I gave nearly $5 million in savings that we could find, and none of them were the services that you mentioned. Let's not try to scare this community about what fiscal responsibility looks like. We can accomplish basic government services and work within our means. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The, my answer would be, you're absolutely correct. In order to increase services by a dollar, you have to raise a dollar. What this budget is proposing is an increase in the Tallahassee Police Department's budget with the hiring of 20 new officers that I believe are needed in this community. And that is the proposed increase while holding all other services level. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this will be quick. I mean, I think what Commissioner Matlow, what he's raised and what you frankly just raised, that's exactly the kind of conversation, these budget workshops, where we should be having it. I don't disagree with you. I don't want to make those cuts either. But for not only the commissioners, but the public to understand and weigh in, we shouldn't be hearing that from you. That's what we should be talking about here. Thank you.
You have had ample opportunity to bring up and make a motion to cut anything, and no motions have been placed on the table. The motion that's on the table that I seconded is for option A. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three two with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. It is also recommended option B to provide feedback on the proposed fiscal year 24 budget. I believe you probably have heard loud and clear, keep tightening where you can. We are all very excited to see what the final assessments will be from the property appraiser's office. And is there any other additional feedback?
Mr. Mayor, I would also point out that we've had, how many workshops now?
Four.
This is the fourth workshop.
Right.
And in each workshop, it has been clearly stated what the direction of this commission is to staff. Has it not been clear with the city manager?
It's been very clear.
And so that's what staff has gone forward with in this proposed budget, the direction given unanimously by this commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Commissioner Matlow then Porter? No, Commissioner Porter?
Well, it certainly wasn't unanimous. I just want to make that clear.
No, you are correct. So.
I take that back if it wasn't unanimous.
The final, and I think you do need a vote on this because by law, we have to have two budget hearings. And so this is more administrative than anything. The recommendation C, which is affirm the process for the scheduled budget hearings. Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. I'll second the motion. Any final comment? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?